Good evening, everybody. If you can have a seat. We'll get started shortly. As soon as everybody gets some there. All right. Well, good evening. And welcome to the 2020 AUSD School Board Candidates Forum. My name is Kevin Fox, and I have the great honor and privilege of serving as the president of the Arcadia Teachers Association, where part of our mission is to quote "educate the educators." Tonight, we hope to broaden that goal and help educate our entire community. Tonight's forum is being co-sponsored by the Arcadia Council PTA, the Arcadia Educational Foundation, and the Arcadia Teachers Association. First, before we get started, I want to thank a few important people. So most importantly are five candidates. We want to thank you for taking the time to come together to help educate our community in the issues related to what we all find and cherish is that a high-quality education for all of our students. Special thanks to Mrs. Lisa Tadishi Wong, President of the Arcadia Council PTA, Mr. Miguel Sia, President of the Arcadia Teachers Association, Dr. Isa and the staff here at First Avenue Middle School, Arcadia Unified School District for all their support and help, and Mr. Frank Sunez and his crew, Patchy News and the video production team at the high school for recording the show, which will then be on YouTube for later viewing. And of course, I have to personally thank Mrs. Jennifer Vargo of the Council PTA and Ms. Annie Rai of AEF for their amazing help and support in pulling all the little strings to make this event possible tonight. There will be an opportunity for audience questions. There will be some cards distributed shortly, and we ask that you please write neatly and finish your questions by about maybe the first 15 minutes of the once a question you get going so we can have a chance to take a look at those and sort them out and prioritize those. For your needs, the restrooms are out the exit to the left into the staff lounge. We will take care of that. Without further ado, I'd like to introduce our co-moderators for this evening. Our first moderator is Mr. Sheldon Wright, a veteran of these events and is the first Vice President of AEF. And Mr. Jeffrey Lee is a senior at Arcadia High School and a member of the AHS We the People Constitution Team. Let's begin, gentlemen.
All right, welcome. Thank you guys so much for coming. Thank you to the candidates. So in this first section, which is the prepared response, each candidate will have three minutes per question, and we will alternate the candidates that start with every question, starting with candidate Akula and then making our way down to candidate Yi. And in the back, we will have a timekeeper who will raise the cards. Yellow means that there's 30 seconds left, and red means it's time to stop. So without further ado, please introduce yourself and please tell us your personal and/or professional experiences that prepares you to serve on the board of the AUSD Board of Education.
Okay. I'm Roshan Akula. I was born and raised in Arcadia, California, where I attended Arcadia schools. I have mild autism, but am fully mainstream, and I've done a lot despite having mild autism. Having autism, I see things in different perspectives others don't see and would like to bring a new perspective to the Arcadia School Board so that we are more inclusive to our special education students as well, so that everyone comes and has a safe environment. Throughout my time in Arcadia, I did a lot of volunteering with the city and even was part of the Boy Scouts, where I attained the rank of Eagle Scout. After attending Arcadia schools all my life, I attended Pasadena City College, then transferred to University of California Riverside, where I obtained my bachelor's degree in applied mathematics. After graduating from University of California Riverside, UCR, I joined the public service program called City Year to help predominantly low-income students in the predominantly low-income school to stay in school by tutoring them in mathematics. It has taken me to Jacksonville, Florida, and New York City, New York, where I got to see different communities at hand in how education inequity still faces us, and I want to make sure that we learn to address any inequities and make education the great equalizer it is. Currently, I am a special education aide at LAUSD, where I help students academically, emotionally, and socially to succeed, and it's an honor to be a special education aide at LAUSD because I can understand what these students are going through and how they function and what they need in order to succeed. Having worked in these different schools, I've seen what happens in two of the largest districts in our nation and want to bring it home to Arcadia. I hope that as a school board member, if you elect me, that I will bring a new perspective home to Arcadia to make Arcadia one of the best schools in the nation.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Raymond Chung. First, I want to thank all the candidates on stage tonight. Wonderful group of people. We will all be very proud for anyone here to serve on the board. I also thank AEF, Arcadia Council PTA, and the Teachers Association for coordinating. Of course, everyone here tonight and watching at home. So we're here tonight to talk about who's going to be fill three of the seats on the Board of Education this year. There's a lot of studies that show that a board that has a wide variety of background and experience and perspective is really what makes for a very strong and effective board. So I'm going to talk a little bit about my perspectives. So here's mine. I grew up in Arcadia, attended Arcadia schools since kindergarten over at Highland Oaks, starting in 1984. I tell you my kindergarten teacher, but I think that's one of my bank account security questions, so probably better not. My class was the last one to attend, Foothills and Estillier Junior High, and the first one to attend Arcadia High as a freshman class. I graduated class of '98. So I'm coming from a place where I have intimate, personal, and historical knowledge of what it's like to be a student, just like Roshan. Three days after I graduated from high school, I shipped off to boot camp, Marine Corps Boot Camp, which is kind of the beginning of the other perspective I have, which is perspective of service as well as safety and security. So as a Marine, I've deployed through Iraq over in 2003, worked on humanitarian missions, and in the last 20 years, I spent my career in public safety and emergency planning, emergency management, including 10 years at the law enforcement agency, and currently I've actually worked for a fire department in a city of 180,000 people. So you know, I'm coming really from that perspective of looking at how to increase safety and security for all of our citizens, for our entire community, but specifically in this capacity for our schools and for kids. And it's unfortunate to say, but we live in a very different world than we used to when we grew up. You know, it's a lot more uncertainty out there, threats that we're facing. So you know, I'm going to bring that to the table so we can do everything we can to keep our kids safe because, you know, there is a lot to do. There's a lot to do. I also come from a perspective of being a working parent. You know, my wife and I both work full-time, and you know, we have two kids in the district, so I know the daily struggles of homework, struggling sports and music, figuring out drop-offs and pickups. So I think being a working parent and having that perspective really does help you to see the issues that pop up every single day, especially as you talk to other parents and see what the issues are. So those are my perspectives. You know, we're not going to be able to talk about everything tonight, so encourage everyone to look at my website, electraymond.com. A lot more information on there. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kay Kinsler. The reason, my background and experience and what prepares me to be a school board member, first, I've spent the last eight and a half years on the school board. I have received the California School Board Association's Master of Governance certificate, which is about 70 hours of classes. Before that, I grew up in the Pasadena area. Most of the years were here. I attended Pasadena City College and Cal Poly Pomona. I have a degree in chemical engineering from Cal Poly Pomona, and that was received back in the day when women really did not go into STEM careers. So I learned firsthand the challenges of what it's like for a woman in a male-dominated field. I worked with Procter &amp; Gamble as a manufacturing manager in a factory making consumer products. Then I met my husband, Warren, and we have two sons who are now both grown adults. We moved to Arcadia in 1998 for the Good Schools. My next career was as a mother and professional volunteer. Without knowing it, I started preparing for this role as a board member when my sons were in nursery school. I was on the board directors at our nursery school, and it continued. When I moved to Arcadia, I immediately got roped in and was quickly on the board at Highland Oaks, where I served as a president, then on to Foothills, where I served as a president not only of PTA but also as the music club for two years. And then at high school, I was president of Arcadia High for two years. The kids graduated, and I stayed on as Council PTA president for two years before moving on to the school board. I also served school site councils and the school site leadership teams at each of the schools that my children attended. One of our sons was a special-led student in Arcadia, and having a child with learning challenges made me realize that we could do things better, and I wanted to see changes made in our programs. And I had a passion for education and how we can reach every child, and that's what drove me to move, go on to the board because it truly is through high-quality education where our students succeed. Lastly, the other thing for me is I am accessible. People can reach out to me and talk to me. I'm available so that I can represent you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kun Nguyen. I'm proud to share the stage with these candidates. I'm an incumbent. I've served as a trustee for the Arcadia Unified School District for the past 12 and a half years. I currently serve as the board's liaison with our community for the Local Control Accountability Plan and the Arcadia High School Music Club. I've also served as the board's liaison with the Arcadia Chamber of Commerce, the Arcadia Educational Foundation, the Athletic Booster Club at the high school, the LA County School Trustees Association, and the Joint Youth Commission with the City of Arcadia. My wife, Lana, and I both moved to Arcadia 20 years ago because of Arcadia's reputation as an excellent school district. We are the proud parents of three Arcadia students, two are currently pursuing their bachelor's degree, and our youngest is in the fourth grade. My family and I immigrated to the United States from Vietnam in 1975. I was a media cell student. I was inspired to be a civil engineer by my seventh-grade drafting teacher and my high school physics and history teacher, whom I still keep in touch with today. I firmly believe that a quality public education is the foundation for successful citizens and communities. I'm a civil engineer with LA County Public Works. We provide regional infrastructure and municipal services to enhance and protect the quality of life for over 10 million residents in LA County. We have an annual budget of $3 billion. We are also the engineering arm of the county family. I've been a public servant for 30 years now, and I use that direct experience in capital projects and public construction contracts, building libraries, parks for our community, and the Hollywood Bowl to advocate for stated art facilities for Arcadia, to ensure that our district-wide Measure A improvements were done on time, within budget, and with minimal disruptions to our staff and students. I have also served our community as the Regional Commissioner for AYSO Region Two. We have over 2,000 registered players and an all-volunteer board of 20 members. That's what really prepared me for my position on the school board. I've coached and refereed every age group from U6 to U19, and in addition to being the picture date coordinator, I've personally prepared the game and field schedule for the entire region, keeping in mind what's important for you was also important for me. I'm also a former president of the American Society of Civil Engineers, Metropolitan Los Angeles branch, where we have over 6,000 members. I was active with the Government Affairs Committee, and we developed an infrastructure report card to lobby our state and federal leaders to increase funding for public infrastructure. I also worked extensively with the Student Affairs Committee to mentor and guide our student chapters at UCLA, USC, and Cal State LA. My personal professional experience, my long-term commitment and service to our community, and my commitment and dedication to the well-being of our students, and my ability to listen and collaborate, and my experience as part of the district's leadership team for the past 12 years is why I'm well-qualified to be a school board member.
I just wanted to thank AEF, the PTSA, the PTA, and also the Teachers Association for having this forum and also to be with my fellow candidates. And so a little bit about myself. My name is Shirley Yi, for those of you who don't know me, and I'm a parent of two daughters. One is an eighth grader here at First Avenue, and the other one is a 10th grader at Arcadia High School. I think for me, the experience I've had volunteering and being very involved with the schools here has really given me a really good view of like what our district does, what our board does in setting the direction, and also has provided me the leadership skills, I guess I would say, for to be on the board. I've been in a lot of board positions, just as Kay has, and PTA president at Holly, PTSA president here at First Avenue. I'm currently the VP of Membership at Arcadia Council PTA. I'm on the Citizens Measure A Committee as well, and I'm also on the board member at Creative World, which is a local creative arts school. It's a nonprofit that basically wants to bring creative education to all kids in our community. I feel that my active involvement in our schools has really allowed me to forge the trusting relationships that I have with the parents and the teachers and administrators. And I'm just really passionate about serving our students in general, which is part of the reason why I've been doing so much here. I really like to talk to parents and the teachers and the faculty. I think sometimes I'm late for work because I'm also a working mom, a full-time working mom as well, doing private commercial real estate investments. So, but I just like to hear what everyone is thinking and what everyone's doing. And I think that was part of the reason why when I became president at Holly, I heard people saying, "We want to have more of a community. Now we have fences around our schools." And, you know, how do we get this community going again? Because we feel like we're locked out. A lot of the parents had been there for a while, really remember the schools being very open and parents being able to come on to the campuses. So I, you know, after talking to a lot of people, I thought, you know, as PTA president, maybe I can do something about that. So went to my board, and we discussed it and decided, you know, let's do some family events. So I did a bunch of things like donuts with dads and muffins with moms and things like that, and created this community that they still do today, and a lot of schools have adopted, and I'm really proud of that. I feel like listening to the parents and being able to do something about it is something that I can also bring to the board. So when you're looking at my experience, I hope that you will see that my passion and my volunteer experience as well as my work experience are great assets for the board. Thank you.
I'm Sheldon Wright, and I'm proud to be here representing AEF. Thank you, candidates. And so what we'll do now is start with candidate Chung with the following question. What do you see as the primary work of the Board of Education?
So the objective of any board is to provide direction and oversight to the administrator, in our case, the superintendent, and staff primarily in terms of overall policy. But honestly, as individual board members, the role really is entirely what one makes of it. One can do a little or a lot. Choice is up to the individual. You know, through my volunteering, I've been on a few boards as well in the past, from the Disaster Reaction Team Board, the Arcadia Chapter of the Red Cross, Arcadia American Little League, Huguenot School Site Council, City of Arcadia's Recreation and Parks Commission. So in all these cases, my role, how I saw it, was never to be just to come to the meetings and, you know, just be a pretty face up there, you know. But if I'm there, I'm there for a reason. I'm a Marine, so we like to get in, get the job done, and get out, and there's just no time for playing around. So for example, a while back, I was a coach for T-ball. I observed the condition of the field we played on was very poor and was actually probably unsafe. I brought it up a few times to the person in charge of T-ball, but nothing happened. So next season, I joined the board, and right away, we got the field changed to one that was in much better and safer condition, most importantly. And of course, that meant being on the board, I had to plan the family fun festival the next three years, but that's okay. Small price to pay so that make sure we keep our kids safe. So if I'm elected, you're going to expect that same mentality from me. I'm not going to be up there and just say everything is fine and, you know, everyone's doing a great job and go home with, you know, nothing being different. Yes, we're going to give credit where credit is due, absolutely, but I'm going to be asking hard questions, and I will have high expectations on what those answers may be. One thing that definitely sets me apart is I am a bit of an outsider. I don't have close relationships to the district administrators. That gives me a lot of freedom, actually, to really talk about some of the tough questions that are facing our schools. And, you know, despite our well-deserved reputation, there are some very difficult issues we have to face, like drug use on campus, for example. You know, maybe a lot of parents may not be aware, but it is an issue on campus. So those things we need to confront, we need someone who's willing and able to bring those up and not just settle for the status quo. If it's good enough, it's not. It's not good enough. Otherwise, the board isn't, if the board's not there to challenge the district to do better, then really there's no point to have the board at all.
The role of the board at AUSD is, my role would be to first represent you, the community, on the Board of Education. The board is responsible to do the best it can to provide the environment in which our students can receive the best education possible. The Board of Education works as a team to set direction, vision, and policy. It also provides financial oversight. The authority of the board comes from us collectively making decisions. No one board member has the authority to make any decision. The board hires the superintendent and does their annual performance evaluation. The board essentially provides the legislative and judicial branches of the governance, where, and they hire the superintendent to do the third arm, the executive arm of the school system. The board's a final say on disciplinary matters, and I'm proud to say that when there are differences of opinion on our board, we take a look. The question it ends up being, what is it that you see that I'm missing? So that there becomes a true understanding of our differences and opinions. This and the fact that we do always do what is best for our students has us making the best decisions for our school district. The board has a long history of acting in the interests of our students, with our students foremost in our minds. We don't view this service as a step to higher political office, and this makes for a very healthy and functional decision-making process and a very good board.
As a school board, first and foremost, we are elected by the community, and we are trustees with the oversight of our school district. The primary purpose of a school board is to basically hire the most important person who shares our community's vision and has the most care for our students and education. We hire the superintendent, support and evaluate his or her performance. I've successfully worked with three exceptional superintendents, Dr. Weemee Hennessy, Dr. Joshawn, and Dr. David Renastall, our current superintendent. We also establish goals and policies to set direction for the district. What this means is there are values that we uphold. We believe in excellence, accountability, a growth mindset, and establish policies which advocate our core values. The board adopts the budget to ensure that it's aligned with the needs of our students, staff, and resources. We set a three-year budget that is sound, and once again, we emphasize the value that we uphold. When we approve additional expenditures or make adjustments or cuts, we take those roles gravely and responsibly as you would when you set your family's budget. We invest in what we view as priorities for the district, which is student health and well-being during their entire education process. The board also acts, as Kay says, as the final arbiter for districts, the district's uniform complaint process for personnel and discipline matters. As a 12-year veteran of this process, I still bring pride and compassion as part of my job because I know the impacts it has for the family. For me, the most important responsibility that the board has is to listen, think with our hearts, and to work collaboratively with each other and effectively. We need to build relationships, nurture existing ones, and build new relationships. We attend professional development programs and workshops, programs like the Masters in Governance that Kay alluded to, legislative seminars on the budget, the annual California School Board Association Annual Education Conference, to learn about upcoming legislation, new programs, technology, and resources, and services that will be beneficial for our schools. Lastly, we collaborate and engage with our students, parents, staff, and the community, all with the single purpose to support student success. Thank you.
All right. So what I see as the primary work of the Board of Education is really at the core is prioritizing the whole child. I mean, I think any of our decisions and anything that we do in our work as a board really should have that as the core of it. And in order to make sure that that whole child is prioritized, that responsibility for the board is to set that direction for the school district so that they're able to move forward on that core value. And in supporting the school district, we, the board, would have open communication with all the stakeholders in AUSD, establish really effective and efficient structure, provide the support that the school and the school district would need just so that they have the resources to do, you know, to move towards that whole child prioritization, and also ensure the accountability, like Kay and Kun had mentioned, which is, you know, financial oversight, because that is a main thing that we do, is to oversee the budget, make sure that things are being used in a most efficient way. And most importantly, just be advocates for our children and our families in this community. Ultimately, I mean, this is kind of a dream, but I sort of envision a board that is able to like move education towards a future where all children are driven by their aspirations and not necessarily by their circumstances. I think that that's the part that everyone always looks at is the, you know, we hear equity all the time and, you know, all the different stakeholders of the school district, and at the end of the day, we need the resources to be able to work with those different stakeholders. And I think hopefully, as a board, we continue to advocate to our legislators and make sure that they know that we are watching them and that we have a desire to make sure that they know that we need funding for our schools, and I think that is really what the board should do. So, thank you.
I believe the function of the Board of Education is to make sure that we provide high-quality education for all students who come into our school district. That means we focus on the whole child. We support the child with his or her needs. Whenever they step on the campus, we make sure that the parents are involved and that they, we serve the community so that they also have a say in the education that they are receiving, because we want to be collaborative with the community in making sure that the education serves the needs of the students and that students are able to find out and learn what makes them happy. We want to make sure that We want to make sure that we're able to prepare students to go to higher education, such as college and university, and eventually get into good careers, so that they eventually give back to the community. These students are the future, not just to our community, but to our state and our nation, because people who attend Arcadia Schools venture out throughout this entire nation. And we want to make sure that our budgets reflect the needs of the community and the students, because we serve not just the community and the students, but the staff, the faculty, and everyone who works for the district and in this community.
All right, so, if at this point, you have written down any questions, please give them to Mr. Fox, right over here. All right, and for our next question, what, we're gonna start with candidate Kinsler and work our way down. What is the single best or greatest thing about AUSD? Why do you think that's the case? And what would you do to make sure that is still true five years from now?
Well, we have a lot of great things going, happening in Arcadia Unified, and there's no shortage of accolades. However, I think the best thing we have are our people, the teachers, the staff, the administrators, the students, the parents, and yes, even community members. We have the best people in LA, and I think that's the case, because we truly live by our values. Our values are to collaborate, think critically, be creative, offer empathy, and learn from failure. We really value relationships. We challenge each other to be our best, and people rise to that challenge. We build a nurturing, caring culture at every school site. Interest-based bargaining is our preferred way of working with our employee groups. We are relational, and that's a really good thing, because 85% of our spending is on personnel. How do we make sure that people are still the best thing that we have five years from now? I think it's fairly simple. We continue to maintain and continue to live by our values, collaborate, think critically, be creative, offer empathy, learn from failure. And just like children learn from what they see and behave the same as what they see, board members must live and act by those values, so everyone else lives and works by those values. Conscious choices are made daily to value our people. We always try to do what is right. We need to maintain our policies on civility and how we do our business. I think we need to continue with our Leader in Me, which is our character education program, and restorative practices. These two programs truly help to build the culture in our schools. Principals work hard to develop a culture of caring at each school, and the board must continue to support the work of our administrators, principals, teachers, and employees in the work they are doing. Richard Branson once said, "Train people well enough so they can leave and treat them well enough so they don't want to." So, we need to continue with good professional development and continue to build our leaders. The people who've left AUSD did so because they wanted to move up into leadership roles, and we didn't have enough openings in our district. Lastly, we never forget our community, our wonderful community members who support AUSD by passing and paying for the parcel tax and the construction bond, our Measure A and I. That's why people are the best.
Like Kay said, there are a lot of great things about Arcadia. For me, the greatest thing about our district is our culture, climate, and our support for innovation. Our reputation is not merely in the test scores or numbers. We walk, talk, and have produced results, due to our belief, culture, climate, and a climate that is supportive and collaborative. It's our collaboration process, vertically from our high school all the way down to our elementary schools, and horizontally between all of our middle schools and our elementary schools. I'm amazed at how many site administrators show up when we have a board learning block. We have principals from middle school, high school, as well as the elementary school. We also recruit and hire the best administrators, teachers, counselors, and support staff. We have a positive and safe learning environment. We are a one-to-one school district. That means every student has a culture. We have programs and support services that meets the needs of every student, Character Edge programs, like Kay mentioned, the Leader in Me, restorative practices. We've also expanded Avid to all of our schools, athletics, and student organizations. You can't count them, there's so many. We have a world-class visual and performing arts program. We believe that every student has the potential to make a profound impact on the program. That's our district's logo and slogan. We have state indoor art facilities, thanks to the community for your support of Measure I, which funded all these projects and modernized all of our schools. We have a community that values and supports education. Thank you for your support of Measure A. In March of 2017, this is a parcel tax of $280 per parcel, and it generates 4.4 million per year for our district until 2035. That's local control for you. We have four nonprofit organizations that were established solely to support our schools: Arcadia, the Arcadia High School Music Club, the Arcadia High School Athletic Booster, and the Arcadia Performing Arts Foundation. We are also supported by several community-based organizations, like the Arcadia Rotary, the Arcadia Masons, the Arcadia High School Chinese Parents Booster Club, the newly-formed Arcadia High School Hispanic Parent Booster Club, and of course, the Arcadia Chinese Association. What would I do to ensure our continued success? This requires that we have a visionary board that values all of these things and must work collaboratively to prioritize the needs of our students, be physically responsible, and work with Sacramento to ensure that we have full, fair, and sustainable funds for our school. And lastly, we need to continue to be innovative. Did you know that the district has a chief innovation officer? And we must continue to engage and collaborate with the community to ensure student success at all levels. Thank you.
All right, so, for me, the single best gross thing about AUSD really stems from my experiences, especially being PTA president at two schools and having the opportunity to talk to other school districts, other PTA presidents, and school board members. And I, you know, the one thing I really realized is that AUSD really is set apart, because we have such good working relationships with all the different stakeholders here. And what I mean by that is that everyone has respect for one another, they're able to work through their differences, and in an ominous and open way. And I think that's the reason why we're able to accomplish so much, really comparatively to the other districts. There's no infighting going on, and, you know, we're really focused on what's doing, what we can do that's best for our children, our students. And I think that that working relationship is really the cornerstone, because without having a good working relationship, listening to each other, open communication, listening to the differences, and asking those questions of each other, we wouldn't be able to achieve and be the excellent school district that we are, without it, honestly. You know, you see all the news stories of the other districts, and, you know, they get bogged down by the relationship, and that takes away from our kids, it takes away from our students, our staff, our faculty. And that time, I mean, time is money, I mean, we hear that all the time. And so, really, the cornerstone to me is the good working relationship. And for me, to promote that moving forward is to keep that open communication going, of course, you know, make sure that we talk to the parents, the students, the faculty, continue to work with them in an open way, and, kind of like what Kung said, you know, I think because of that, we're able to be creative, we're able to innovate, and really be one of the forerunners of a lot of the practices that we've put into place here, which, as a parent, you know, it makes me proud that I'm in a district that my kids get to experience, you know, these programs that other schools don't. And a lot of those parents will ask me, like, "Wow, you know, how do you guys do that?" And really, it's the relationship. So, hopefully, if I get on the board, I will continue to do that and listen and be open, try to have more maybe community events where we can, the board can, talk to the parents and students and the community members, make sure that we have that open communication. I think that would be really, you know, something that we could do.
So, the question again is, what is the single best or greatest thing about AUSD? Why do you think that's the case? And what would you do to make sure that that is still true five years from now?
I will say that the single best thing in AUSD is the awards and sweepstakes that our students win through the many groups they're a part of. I remember hearing so much, including some of the groups I was in, that we won this award and we won all these sweepstakes. And we want students to feel proud of their accomplishments, and because student success is a major component of making AUSD a wonderful district, it is. In addition to the student success, it's also the teachers and faculty advisors to help lead these students into success. So, we want to make sure that we hire, keep, train, and recruit such teachers, so that they're able to coach these students to continue to do well in their different activities, so that whether it's academically or some other activities, that they always are doing their best and that they continue to win all these awards and sweepstakes, that I believe has given our school national recognition at times.
So, I'm gonna steal Kay's answer. Our greatest strength is our people, and it goes from the teachers, the students, to the parents, community members, who all truly believe and value education, you know, they prioritize education. You ask most people why they moved to Arcadia, they're gonna all, pretty much, 100% of them are gonna say because of the schools. This strength, though, is also potentially our greatest weakness. The very foundation and health of the city kind of rests in our schools and the reputation. So, it's still a line from my favorite movie's backdraft, "Where do schools go? The city goes." When I went to Arcadia High, our principal was Mr. Plord. He had a model that was really easy to remember, which is why I still remember today, 20 years later. It was simply the best. So, pretty easy to remember, right? We thought it was kind of silly at the time, but we kind of believed in it too. We did think we were the best. And unfortunately, I'm not sure we are anymore. Last year at Arcadia High, the percentage of students meeting or exceeding standards on the California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress math test was 66%. So, fully one-third of the students that did not meet state standards for math, that's down from four years ago, when it was 71%. So, in comparison, La Cañada School District had 82% of students meeting or exceeding for the same test, San Marino, 86%. So, simply the best, we're not. So, at 66%, I know these are supposed to be diplomas, but, you know, we need to do better, we need to be better than that. But I think we should measure more than just academics, you know, academics is not everything. You know, there's more to academics, I'm sorry, there's more to life than academics. And if we measure what matters to us, I'd like to see more students as we look, to look forward to go to school. There's a lot of anxiety nowadays, especially in high school, you know, obsessing with test scores and their grades and getting into the top colleges. But I'd like to see us do a survey on four of these children, these students, about how many of them have someone they trust at school? How many feel safe on campus? You know, how much anxiety do they feel at school? And these are very important things that we should be tracking, because that is tracking the, you know, emotional health and safety of our children. Because if we make them truly feel supported in all the ways, not just academic, then academics will eventually follow, I believe. Thank you.
You're all doing great, all right? Okay, so, the next question, we'll start off with candidate win. It's a two-part question. What does "Better Together" mean to you? And what would you do to make that a reality?
Thank you, Sean. Better Together is the district's theme for the school year. We've all heard of the saying, "It takes a village to raise a child." This is an African proverb that means that an entire community, everyone, must interact with children for those children to experience and grow in a safe and healthy environment. And the villagers, all of them, look out for the children. For me, Better Together means we work together as a team, collaboration by our school board with each other, our district administration, our site principals, and their respective staff, and of course, our unions, Arcadia Teachers Association, the Arcadia People's Support Services Association, and CSEA. We have an interest-based bargaining process, like Kay said before. Our collaboration at our schools, I said before, vertically and horizontally, and our collaboration between the school district, the community, and community-based organizations. And lastly, collaboration between our parents and community organizations like AEF, the Music Club, the Athletic Booster Club, and PTSA. What I, what would I do to make this a reality? I'm proud to say that we have a very cohesive board, and all five members work in a collaborative manner to support the needs and well-being of all of our students. The school district is currently doing a very good job of collaborating with the school sites and our community. However, we do have room for improvement in the area of parent participation. Parent participation is a critical factor to ensure the ongoing success of our schools and students. We are also currently developing an information packet for realtors to give to families who are new to the district, to educate them about our schools and our registration process. Now, in an ideal world, everybody participates and supports every child, like that saying does. But the reality is, that's a 10% role. 10% of the people do 100% of the work, and the other 90% choose not to participate. Now, you guys are the 10%ers, okay? You're here. What I would do is encourage parents to become more active and participate in PTA, to support their child's education and the various activities for their children. Did you know about the Family School Partnership Act of 1995? Well, if you don't, it's a California state law that allows you to take up eight hours per month, 40 hours a year, to attend and participate in your children's various programs. Parents, we need your talent and time. Your children need your time and talent. I would encourage more parents to participate in AEF, including parents of those whose children are on permits to our district, because the level of participation in AEF is only around 10%. We need more than 10% people. And lastly, I would challenge and encourage our staff to be more creative and create more opportunities for parent volunteers.
So, for me, Better Together means that working together as a team toward a common vision will enable us to do so much more than working alone without a common goal. I always liked the saying from Helen Keller, "Alone, we can do so little, but together, we can do so much." And that just, that phrase right there, "So-so much," says a lot, and this holds true in our district as well. I mean, I love this saying, "Better Together," because it not only means that as a district we need to work together, but there's the community too. And as Raymond had said, you know, where the, you know, the good schools help, the real estate help, I mean, everything's connected. So, you know, working together, Better Together means, you know, the school district works with our community, our city council, our, you know, the different other groups, like Rotary Club. And if we're all working together, then we're better together, and I think that's what it's all about. In terms of, you know, bringing that to reality, I think that we're moving towards that. I know we have a great working relationship now, the city council and the Parks and Recreation, I know, I think Raymond's a part of that as well. And I think just being able to continue that communication with all the stakeholders at AUSD. at AUSD, parents, and the students, I think sometimes, you know, we forget that the students do have a voice too. And it's interesting because I, you know, I'll ask the students things, you know, at the high school as well. There is a lot of stress there. And, you know, I think that sometimes we just forget that all we need to do is just pay a little attention to the kids. So, asking them a question. What I love, and I just heard about this, is that the high school's gonna be opening up that wellness center. I think that's a part of better together. I mean, these sort of tools and, you know, ideas that us as adults bring for the kids, and then bringing them into that conversation and bringing those kids into, you know, making some of those decisions. I know at the wellness center, they have had some input from the, from the students. And I think that just makes it more a part of their life and not something that's been handed down to them. Because let's face it, it's not just our district that our children are having a hard time and stressing about college. It's, it's all districts. I have a nephew and niece in the same grade in different, you know, on the west side, in Sacramento area, and all three of the kids have stress. It's not just in Arcadia. So I think it's just the culture. And so if we're working together, we will be better together, so.
Better, for me, better together means that we come together for a common cause. I want to thank each one of you for coming here tonight, because we're all coming here to decide where our next school board member is. And as one of the candidates earlier said, that when there's only 10% here and not the 90%, we need to bring the other 90% in. And we need to make sure that we get everyone involved in the community to go out and vote and, and be interactive with us, because, because we need more peo-, because the more people participation we have, the more we are able to do our job and serve and represent the people better. Because when we come, when we come together as a large group of people, as has been shown throughout history, there is nothing that can stop us and that we can do a lot more things together to make Arcadia a better place. So, I, I think it's important that there's issues that are out there that you, that the community is involved. We engage with the community and get them involved on these issues so that, that their say is more of a reality on the school board.
So the issues with slogans is that when you use them, you really do need to mean them. It can't just be words on the page. Better together should mean we're stronger as a whole than we are apart. But when my friend Sheri, who's an Arcadia mom, when she hears those words, her heart breaks because it isn't true for her. Sheri's daughter Eva was born with a genetic condition called Bowery-Hobbit syndrome, which means she has access and functional needs, like needing a wheelchair. An nurse who asked the sister at her school, which because of her needs, is at what's called a special education local plan area school, this is actually in Monrovia. But her heart breaks because better together can't be true if it excludes children like Eva. So instead of better together, it feels more like it's better without her. But the thing is, we aren't better without her. We would better, be better with her. We are with her. So thinking about all that we teach our kids, you know, not only what we preach, but that we practice greater inclusiveness. And I'm not talking about holding like one prom for the kids so they can experience what one, what a mainstream kid experiences every day. I mean, real inclusiveness, like having them come to, you know, the main campuses on a more regular basis, for assemblies, for parties, for occasional daily activity. It'd be amazing to have just, you know, some of the early readers in our schools read short books to them. Think about how much everyone can learn from that, just one thing, that one thing. You know, kids can gain more confidence in their reading, others can feel like they're just a regular student in, in class. And everyone becomes, you know, more understanding, they'll have more empathy, and just appreciate that even though God made us all different in our own way, we all still matter, we're all valued, and we're all loved equally. So I don't think we're better together just yet, but we can be. All of our lives would be enriched by including these kids and their families. We just need to mean it, we need to live it before, before we say it. Thank you.
So, better together. It's been proven that a diverse work, group or workforce makes better decisions. Everybody brings different perspectives to the table, whether by working as a team, whether that team is a class, a group of students or teachers, a committee. That group working together will make more, bring more ideas to the table and insights to the table, and thus, better decisions are made. I, I believe that continuing with our collaboration and working with our values continues to keep us together. We do small working groups currently with our teachers and staff, and those have brought out incredible ideas. Our performing arts, our math pathways, a lot of different changes have happened from the ideas out of those groups. So whether it's continuing with small working groups or variation on that over time will be fabulous. We have lots of booster groups, and in fact, board members sit on each of the different booster groups so that we keep a two-way dialogue going. And those come up with great ideas and continued changes. And we are doing more and more inclusion of special ed into our classes. So I do believe we are better, better together. In this world, oftentimes, collaboration is looked at as compromise. Where collaboration is not compromise, it's teamwork. It's working together, and it's essential, and together we are better.
Okay, next, starting with candidate Yi. Here's the big one, guys. What, in your opinion, is the greatest challenge facing AUSD in the years ahead, and how do you propose to address it?
Alright, so I think the biggest challenge facing AUSD is our funding. As California continues to be one of the worst for student funding, currently ranked 38th according to the California School Board Association, it's not covering the costs of our, you know, our education for our children. And so, I think that that is gonna be a big concern for us, and as the, as we look into the future, we do see deficits coming up. Of course, we're completely grateful for our community for the Measure A parcel tax that they passed, because that has really enabled us to keep the teachers that we need. You know, because even in that department, California is ranked really low in the ratio between teachers and students. And so, funding is ultimately, although we don't like to talk about it, is probably gonna be the biggest challenge for our district. The way to address it, I think, is to continue to, you know, be in front of the legislatures, like I've said before. I mean, I know like, you know, a few of us had gone to the PTSA Legislative Conference, and that was really a great way to, you know, talk to the Assemblyman Ed Chow and to Senator Rubio personally, and just to let them know that, you know, we're watching the budget. We, you know, we want something to be done. And it was great to hear that just recently, there's a bill from Senator Maruichi's Assembly Bill Number 39, and that just passes the assembly and is going to the state senate now. And it's something actually that hopefully all of you here can tell the other parents and the other community members that we need to, you know, tell the senator, the senators to support that bill. And that bill basically is saying that, at least give us a per-student funding so that, you know, we're at the national average. Because right now, you know, we're around 10,000 per student. National average is 12,000. And so, you know, we're, that's, that $2,000 is a huge difference for us, and can do so much for our kids. I mean, including special education. Now, of course, the governor did give us a big chunk of money this year for special education. I think that's great, and that will be helpful, because, you know, that's another component. And the inclusion is something that I know our district has been doing and has been, you know, making great strides in. But it does cost money, and we need aids, and we need a lot of things for those, you know, for these kids to be safe and, you know, cared for. And so I think, at the end of the day, that is our biggest challenge. And hopefully, as a community, we can tell our legislatures that, that, that part of our state funding needs to be changed.
I agree with, with you, Ms. Shirley Yi, that, that we do need to have more funding for our education. And, and it's not just, and this is not just an AUSD issue, this is a national issue. And, and it's been for the past 40 years, I believe, that the funding for education has dwindled, and that we need to be more involved as a community and go out and, and, lobby our, our elected officials. When I was a student at UCR, I, I got, I was one of the selected students that the associate since paid for us to go up to Sacramento to lobby our elected officials, and we froze a 28% tuition increase in UC tuition. While I'm done with my education, I'm here to advocate for education for all your kids, because I know all of you want to have high-quality education, not just in grade school, but beyond into college. So, we have, I, if I'm elected to the school board, I would want to set up a student delegation along with the school board that we lobby our elected officials at the local, state, and even national level, so that we fight for more funding for our schools and that we become one of the best educated workforce in, in, in the world.
So I'm pretty sure we're all gonna be on the same page here, which is really good. But it's all about the Benjamins, baby. We're, we're on the third straight year of budget deficit at the district, mostly due to the pension crisis. We're not alone. This year, fiscal year, almost $8 million in the red. In Chinese, aid is supposed to be good luck, but this is not the case for this, this time. So we're down, but we're not out. But think about this, the economy's red hot right now, but we're still in this deficit, right? What if a recession hits? At a recent board meeting, the Director of Fiscal Services says that if that happens, then teacher layoffs are on the table. It's probably the first time anyone has really heard that, and it's probably a problem, because we need to be more open and more transparent so people can understand what the issues are. This is the year 2020, right? And there's no reason that the board meetings can't be livestreamed, just like this forum is right now, and recorded, so anyone can watch them going back in time, you know, see what the board's been doing, what issues that they're working on. Monrovia Unify already does this. You know, we can have the great students who are doing this right now, right, livestreaming this very forum, do the same thing for our board meetings. It'd be a great, you know, life learning experience for them and be great for the entire community. The point is that the budget, the financials, it's a real problem. We're not gonna solve it tonight, right, right here, right now, but these issues need to be out in the open, so we can work on them together. You know, maybe a financial committee can be put together like the, the city of Arcadia did a couple of years back, to work on these budget challenges, right, to see, you know, what areas that we can reduce spending on or where we can increase revenue. But going forward, it's gonna take more than whoever's on this board to fix the problems. It's gonna take everyone in this room, everyone watching, everyone not watching, to really, you know, recognize that this challenge is real and make it a priority to solve it, because it's, it's important before, not only for the city, but for ourselves, for our kids, and of course, for the future. Thank you.
So I'm gonna sound like a broken record here, because I too agree that stable, adequate funding for education in the state of California is our largest challenge. California still ranks on the bottom of the nation for school funding. The lion's share of taxes comes from the wealthy in California and from the taxes on capital gains. So during an economic downturn, there aren't the capital gains, and therefore, that well of money disappears, causing an unstable revenue source. We've worked well in the past, building up reserves and spending them down during the last recession, and we've done exactly the same thing, preparing ourselves for that next, next time, because we know an economy can't keep going forever. The other things we can do around the funding is to continue to work with our partners, partners like California State PTA, California School Boards Association, AXA, which is the Association of California School Administrators, CASBO, the California Association of School Business Officials, California Teachers Association, CSEA, the Classified Employee Association, and other organizations, to continue working with our legislators to increase funding. We, as Shirley mentioned, have a team that goes up to the legislation conference that's hosted by California State PTA. We have a team that includes board members, PTA at all levels, administrators, teachers, and students from the high school to attend and go and meet with Senator Chow, or Assemblyman Ed Chow, and Senator Rubio. And then the last thing, we have to really lobby hard against unfunded mandates. Every year, laws get passed that cost us money, and yet, no additional funding is given, and that eats away with the little, the small amount of funds that we do have. So those are the things I would do to help alleviate the funding issues.
For me, it's sounding like the rest of my candidates at the table. Naturally, the first and foremost, the elephant in the room, is the uncertainty of the economy and the outlook for funding for public education. California does rank at the very bottom. And Proposition 98 in the Local Control Funding Formula establishes the base funding for public education, but what our state elected leaders are doing is they're using that as a ceiling. Currently, districts are only being funded to 2007, 2008 level. And Prop 98 allows the state to cut funding for education when there's a downturn in the economy. Fortunately, our board and our chief business officer are prudent in planning that we have sufficient reserves where we don't need to issue AUSD. We also have, thankful to our community with Measure A, funding 28 teacher positions and three council positions. Now, I personally testify before the State Board of Education, and both Shirley, Kay, and I were at the PTA Legislative Conference in January, with First District PTA representing over 280 schools from Burbank to Pomona, to stress and lobby for adequate funding for public education. Next challenge that I would see is maintaining our reputation as a destination district. We do this by continuing to invest in the professional growth and development of our teachers, counselors, administration, and support staff. We continue to recruit and hire the best teachers and train and support their growth, both the new and existing staff, to develop leaders at all levels. And then to ensure that we continue to collaborate, both vertically at our high school, down to our elementary school, and horizontally between our middle schools. And most importantly, we must continue to support the success of all students so that they can be lifelong learners. Develop career pathways such as video production. Mr. Frank Sunis is here with his crew, who are gonna livestreaming this event for us. Keith, Luca, and his staff, you know, with the sounding, lighting, back of house, sports medicine at the high school, you know, we are preparing our students, your kids, for skills to succeed in careers that currently do not exist today. Because as a matter of fact, your children will have multiple careers, not jobs, in their lifetime. Lastly, a motion that's very dear to me is the social and emotional well-being of our students. This is important to me because as a parent of a child who's placed on hold because of the likelihood of self-harm, you know, we recognize that mental health and wellness is a complex issue that reflects all families. The Wellness Center at the high school was recently opened to support our students. We need to develop guidelines and tools to support our students and teachers in time and space. of need because, bottom line, they trust their teachers and they'll turn to their teachers before they turn to you. And in 2018, our board funded full-time counselors at all the schools, and since I've been on the board, the number of counselors has increased from 13 to 22. So social and emotional well-being is the most important thing.
Thank you, candidates. Thank you, attentive audience. How about a round of applause for all of our candidates? Okay, we're going to go ahead and provide all of you a brief break as we then enter into our last component of this forum where we will actually review your audience questions. So let's take a three-minute break. Okay, three minutes are just about up. Okay, now the fun really begins. So in this round, as a reminder to our candidates, you will have two minutes for a response. And in consideration of all of you who are here tonight, it's 8:15, as well yourselves, we're going to have four questions versus five, and that way we can perhaps get back home to our families a bit sooner. So with that, we're going to go ahead and start where we began in the evening. Candidate Akula, and here comes the first question. "A recession is inevitable. Despite reserves, AUSD may need to make cuts. How would you prioritize programs in such an economy?"
I would prioritize the programs that are more, that are the most important to the students and try to minimize any cuts, any cuts. We want to make sure that students are not thrown out of the programs that they're on and that the, there is minimal impact if we cut a program. We only cut a program that's really not doing well, like there's nothing going on. But we want to make sure that we safeguard as many programs as possible as these programs are about to engage students in their school and help these students to grow when they interact with their peers and the community. We want to make sure that all these, that we have, we retain our state quality of the arts, state of the arts quality programs that has always made Arcadia the great place and district that it is.
So this is a tough question, of course, but my priority would always be to preserve staffing, so our teachers. You know, they're the ones who are in the trenches, teaching our kids every single day, and they deserve the respect to be prioritized in the budget. So absolutely, I would do everything possible to preserve the jobs for our teachers.
You know, recessions and cuts in funding will cause very difficult change, cuts for the administration and board to make. But as I watched the board during the last recession, they were very careful about who got cut. And we were able to manage it with our normal attrition, our normal retirement, by shifting, not hiring and replacing, but shifting the roles and responsibilities. And I think that's what we would do. Right now, we do have TOSSs, teachers on special assignments. And if we really, you know, when 85% of your budget is staffing, you really don't have all that much that you can trim anywhere else. You have to make staffing cuts. That doesn't mean you have to do pink slips, though. You can manage it through the normal attrition. Those TOSSs might need to go back into classrooms, but you would work with the administrative team to figure out what's the best, how can we manage it so our students have the very least impact in a difficult time. So it takes a lot of conversation, a lot of collaboration, working with all of our employee groups to figure out how to go through it. But I think we did it before. I know we can do it again. And we built up the reserves that we had before the last recession so that we're ready to do it at any time.
So I'm proud to say that during my two old years on the board, we've never had to issue any pink slips because of the collateral damage that it does. It shows employees that we don't value them. So like Raymond, first and foremost, I would preserve our staffing. But we need to maintain our essential programs. You know, the board made a conscious decision to keep the music program because we recognized in order to keep a world-class visual and performing arts program, we need to continue with that from the elementary school to the middle school because those schools feed our high school. We deferred ongoing maintenance as long as we could, okay? We kept everything essential, we paid the bills, we got the water running, we renegotiated our utility bills, okay? We got a better E-rate for our phone bills, our internet bills, and we preserved jobs by not having cost of living adjustments. We had our administration executive staff forego their salary raises because it would not be fair for them to get a raise or a promotion if staff wasn't getting any. And lastly, what we also did was to forego any unnecessary travel and training, make sure it was local. And in Arcadia, we have an innovation summit. They come to us to collaborate and train and learn. So we've implemented these steps that we learned during the lean time so that when there's a downturn in the economy, in addition to having to dip into our reserve, we've already weathered this storm and we have a playbook to survive the next one.
So I kind of, I mean, everybody on this candidate forum has pretty much said what I would have said, too. I mean, of course, preserving teachers is the utmost importance. And so like Kay said, you know, if it's 85% of the budget, it's, you know, it takes a lot of work and communication and compromise, working with all the different groups to make sure that that happens. Attrition is definitely always a good way to go. And also what Coon said, too, relooking at all the expenses, renegotiating utilities. All those would definitely go into making sure that we do not need to do any cuts in our staffing because I think at the end of the day, that is what's most important for our students and our students are what we're here for.
This time, we'll start with candidate Chung. "With such an immense student population and a high-pressure environment, what do you believe can be done to ensure the mental well-being of students?"
So we do have a very large number of students, over 9,000 across all of our 11 campuses. So, you know, just the fact of the immense size does create that kind of separation. And, you know, when I graduated, at the ceremony, I looked to my left, I looked to my right, and there were a lot of people I didn't recognize. You know, we spent four years at the same school, but we, I had no idea who they were. So, you know, part of being a community is really not just, you know, being with people that, you know, you know, but actually reaching out and participating in activities with people you don't, right, but still are your peers. I would like to see a lot more team-based activities, you know, kind of like in athletics. You know, I was on the football team, I was on the track team in high school, and that was one of the most valuable experiences because it forced me to become friends with a lot of people who I maybe not, wouldn't otherwise see or become friends with. So in terms of having, you know, maybe not necessarily athletics for everybody, that kind of thing, but, you know, maybe a service requirement where you put students in different tracks, you know, academic tracks together, and have them work on these projects in the community, that way they can get to know each other and really build those bonds that are going to be so much more important, you know, after they graduate, to have those skills, those social skills. So, thank you.
Well, culture is a huge thing to me. Having that caring, nice, comfortable culture at every school has been an important goal. And it has shown that students who feel where they're, they feel comfortable and protected, they do better. So that has been a huge push. And I think that's really important here because we've been working on that from the young grades all the way up for a number of years now. And what that has brought is a better, a greater inclusivity, people bonding together. I dare say, I think it's improved at the high school. I know it's improved since my kids were at the high school. Kids know each other now. They don't find themselves as much not knowing the people standing next to them at graduation, and at least I certainly hope so. That will be a question I'll start asking a few people. But it really has made a difference. And in our classrooms, using our restorative practices has increased the knowledge of people about each other because you share a lot more. And those techniques have really made a difference. I think we can still do more. And an example is that there is a huge push for mental health within our schools and including these wellness centers at each different school site. So we are getting there and I will continue to work on it.
So as I said before, student health and emotional well-being is very important for me. Since the district switched to a full-time counselor at each of our elementary schools, that's so much quicker than strides. Did I mention that we went from 13 to 22 counselors? So we are doing everything we can to support what we value. What our counselors are also doing is they're working with industry professionals, and some of our counselors are also licensed professionals, to develop and define tools to help our teachers to support our student in time of need. So things are already being done at the district. We have a wellness center at the high school and our restorative practice and restorative circles, that works well for our students at the elementary school and the middle schools. But this is an area that we need to continue to support. What I would do in addition to all of this, let's unplug our devices and have a family one night, okay? That's very important. Thank you.
So yes, I mean, wellness is so important and I have a, I have a high schooler right now and she is very stressed out, I have to say. You know, there are days where, you know, I just, I don't know what to do because I want to take that stress away from her. So I think it's, you know, I was so happy to hear that they're opening the wellness center at the high school and at the other campuses across all the schools. I think that is really important to have a place where kids can go to just feel safe and have time to just, you know, have some downtime from the craziness of everything that they have to deal with now. Our students have so much, you know, so many outside stresses with all the different things going on in this world. And because of our devices, they're a lot more plugged in than we were when we were in high school. I know, I have no clue compared to what they do now, you know, what they know now. But I would like, you know, I think part of the wellness also goes down to their families and, you know, you know, families knowing what to do as well, how to support their children. And I would love to see us have some more family engagement nights to kind of, you know, give that education to our parents and make sure that they also know how to support their kids. Because, you know, I am not one of those parents who is demanding straight A's and that, you know, my kids go to Harvard and, but our students are putting that pressure on themselves. And so as a parent, I would love to have more tools to be able to help her. And my eighth grader will be in high school next year, so I'll have two high schoolers and dealing with two stressed-out kids. But, you know, at the end of the day, that's, I think that would be great, just having the tools to be able to support them and with the way, with the district and what they're doing with our kids in terms of wellness, I think that that will complete the picture.
I think the biggest way we can alleviate stress is by restructuring our education system in such ways that the way our education is brought upon in AUSD is that students come to school and that they learn in a way that makes them happy and that they are able to have a balanced life and their well-rounded schedule that, while they come to school for academics, we've said that academics is not the only thing. I think it's a good idea we have the wellness center installed in all these campuses, but I also think we should I also think we should be able to allow students to, to engage more in activities and that we should, we should help students to be more engaged in activities and their academics. Of course, academics are important, but we should also help any student who wants to get involved in their, in any activities or any clubs. So get them involved so that they feel they're a part of the school, they have elsewhere to grow, they can grow not just academically, but also emotionally and socially. We only grow up once. We want kids to remember their time at AUSD was a wonderful time and that they look back, that they, they had a good time with their friends, they did all these different activities, and that they grow up to become more productive than what they are current, they currently are.
Question number three for candidate Kinsler, it's a two-part question. In specific terms, how should we judge the quality of education in Arcadia? What are the most meaningful measures?
Well, you know, that's, that's a good question, and there's, the catch is there's multiple measures that we want to take a look at. And you have to take a look at what's important to the parents and the students. If you want a true measure, the, the state does have a, do with the test, the S-Back, the test, and that is given to some elementary grades and then once again at grade eleven. But the students, it's given to those eleventh graders, but it's done quickly in one day to get it done because it's done in the springtime and it's done during the time that our students are busy doing AP tests, they're, they're focusing on other things that are more important to them. So I think if you take a look more at some of the AP test scores, we had eleven hundred and seventy-three students that were tested for AP tests in the last reporting year, which was two thousand seventeen, eighteen. Of those, seven hundred and ninety students scored a five, seven hundred and sixteen students scored a four, and five hundred and seventeen students scored a three. Obviously, some of these kids were taking multiple AP tests. Only three percent of the students scored a one. There were a total of twenty-three hundred tests taken. So over two, most students took at least two AP classes. That's one way to look at it. You can also look at how our students do in the future, once they graduate and move on. And this year, for the first year, we will be presented with that data, and I'm very excited that at this upcoming board meeting, we'll have that data. Time's up, I can't talk anymore.
Do you repeat the question?
In specific terms, how should we judge the quality of education in Arcadia? And what are the most meaningful measures?
Okay, well, there's several ways to measure success. For me, the most important skill is the character of our students when they graduate to high school. Are they contributing members of society? Are they problem solvers? Are they resilient? Are they, do they have grit and perseverance? Because life, we're preparing them for life. There is no playbook on that. It's their analytical, critical thinking skills, their ability to work with others to resolve and overcome, okay? Failure is part of life, okay? We're on iPhone, this is an iPhone ten, there's an eleven out there. Does that mean it's a lot better than this? No. Does this mean this is a failure? No. Technology advances, and our students have to learn, learn from failure is what we teach our students. And what Kay said before, what are they doing on their career pathways? Like I said before, there are careers that currently don't exist today, and our students are doing successfully because at work, I'm also a recruiter for engineering assistance, and we recruit nationally, and all of our students that I've interviewed that have been hired, we have ten from Arcadia High School, and they all said that Arcadia High School prepared them for college.
So I've never been one to, to base all my decisions on test scores and things like that because that really, like Kay said, it's, it's one moment in time and that, you know, some kids may be sick, it's not their best day, it doesn't really show the whole picture of the child. And so I do agree that part of the measures would, that I think are valuable are seeing how our kids, how our students do once they graduate. And like Kuhn said, it's like, are they resilient? Are they creative? Are they compassionate? Do they have empathy? I mean, these are all characteristics, I think, that are, you know, are going to make our students the leaders that we need in this world because we definitely need some new leadership. And I think that our kids or our students from Arcadia, we're going to see them out there doing that for us. That's where the preparation in Arcadia, you know, has to go. And like Kuhn said, when I talk to students who've graduated from here, they all tell me that they, you know, they're having no problem, they're actually enjoying college, they're enjoying, you know, they feel prepared, they're, they're not wavering at all. And so that to me is a great measure of how successful our, our district is in preparing our students.
I would, I would see our education on how we test our students across people of the, across this world because I've seen and seen what, what happens is how they develop their brains, how they, how they test well, what, what type of quality education they're learning. That means we have high-quality teachers that help all students find what make them, makes them happy in life. Because school is where you find what makes you happy. And with that said, it's necessary that we, we teach, we help, we work individually or collaboratively with students to navigate them to something they like to do. They, they grad, we have a higher graduation rate, which is already impressive than what we currently have, and that we make sure that they're able to go on to successful careers throughout their life. We want to build on our education, learn from other places, and build on our education so that students know the truth in what they learn and that they're able to think critically with their minds. That way, they can contribute better to our society.
So in terms of quality of education, you know, if you just look at the academics, test scores, graduation rates, number of folks, students attending four-year universities, that data's out there, you know, it's probably, it's good data, probably could be a little bit easier to find and be able to compare year over year. I think that would be helpful if you're, that's what parents are looking at. I talked earlier about, you know, what you have to, you have to measure what matters to you, right? So if that's all you care about, then you have it. But we don't have those other measures, right? We don't have the, how comfortable people, students are at school, you know, if they have a trusting friend or teacher on campus. So there's a lot of things that, you know, we still need to capture so we actually do have a good picture of what they're feeling at school. And of course, you know, academics can't be everything, you know, four years after you graduate high school, nobody cares about what you had, what your GPA was in, in high school. So employers, that doesn't matter to them. You know, they're looking at a lot of other things like leadership and empathy and intellectual curiosity. USC has a center called the Third Way Thinking that looks at these other skills, right? These other social skills that are in demand in the workplace now. So those are things we should be emphasizing, those are things we should be measuring, you know, over time. Because at the end of the day, you know, again, nobody remembers what GPA you had in high school or what, you know, AP exam you got a three or a four on. But what matters is that, you know, culturally, if we instill a sense of purpose in our kids, that way, no matter, you know, what occupation they choose, if they have that sense of purpose of, of meaning, then, you know, they're going to be successful, you know, no matter where they are.
Final question for our panel, another two-part. Candidate win. What's your new vision about our special education? How to let students with special needs be involved with the public?
Well, I think we are all different pieces of the same puzzle. I believe that because all of our children are different. And in Arcadia, we have, we're part of a SELPA, Special Education Local Plan Area. And we do everything we can, and more recently, we teach our students in a manner that they're not being pulled out of class during the day to be part of the curriculum. They're being mainstreamed at an earlier stage. Now, for those students that are severe and require services that we don't offer or provide, those students will be sent to the schools as part of the SELPA. And that is how we as a district manage our resources diligently and working in collaboration with our local and school district, maximize our resources. We had a class for the blind at Longley Way. That class is no longer there because there's no need for it. However, we took that opportunity to increase, open up another kindergarten class to reduce the number of classes in our students. So our, our vision is to have inclusion, to include students at every stage of the way.
So I, from my experience, at least, especially here at First Avenue, I've actually seen the inclusion already happening. We have a really great special education director and, and I, and just in the ten years I've been in this district, I have seen the huge leaps forward on making sure that we do, you know, transition the students into the regular classrooms. I actually, you know, when it comes to events and parties and things, I mean, at First Avenue, they do come to our dances. We, I do see them at our dances, I do see them in, on campus, interacting with the other kids. I saw that at Holly Avenue as well. So I understand though that special education, you know, there are costs involved with it. And so I, you know, the district does need to make sure that they, they do what's best for the students, but all students as well. And I think the SELPAs do help the districts, all the neighboring districts, work together and pull their resources together. Because as we all know, and we've talked about funding before already, there's just, we don't get enough funding to cover all the costs that we have to put out, so we're in deficit every year. And, you know, we're here to support all children. And so in order to do that, I think it's great that they have the SELPAs, that they're able to pull, we're able to pull our resources together and help each other out in different districts so that we can do what's best for all the children, including the special needs children.
So as I mentioned earlier, or for those who haven't been here, I, I was part of the special ed program, and one of the things I would say is I don't want students to be felt singled out because they're in special ed. So as an, as an aide, a special education aide at the largest district in the state, LUSD, I go into the classroom and I don't say I'm there for a specific student, I say I'm there for the full class so that the student doesn't feel singled out. We want the students to be able to succeed well academically and also socially. We want them to be in, I want them to be included in more activities. I want students, other students should be, the special ed students do not have to disclose that they're special ed, but there should be awareness of special education students and their needs and that they are included in not just academic events, but social events. They should be able to grow up with their friends, feeling a sense of community and pride in themselves. They should be able to do things together, not just in school, but throughout the community. That way, they have a sense of purpose in their, in their schools. We also should help them to, with any additional needs they have, whether we go push into the class or, or need to give them more assistance. Because special education students also have talents, and we want to make sure that they're inclusive to everyone, including special ed students.
So I spoke earlier a little bit about how I think inclusiveness is very, very important. But to kind of just add on to that a little bit of kind of my, my occupational background in university planning is something that we care a lot about, our people with disabilities and access to functional needs. They are the most vulnerable in disasters and of course even in, in regular life. But a key element to how we take those folks into consideration is that we do not plan about them without them. So they need to be included in these discussions about, hey, what exactly should we do to increase that inclusiveness? It's great that we're all up here talking about this right now, but we need to make sure that the parents of these families are included in the planning and discussion at the very beginning. Arcadia Unified has these groups called SWAGs, Small Working Arcadia Groups. Generally, these are teachers, you know, kind of especially focused on certain, certain issues and problems that they can work together and solve. I would like to see a, a special education SWAG, you know, specifically working on these issues because it's obviously very important to, not just everyone up here, but, you know, a lot of, a lot of the families. So we need to make it a priority, we need to include them in planning, and then we need to really just, we need to listen, right? And, and find out what their needs are and do our very level best to help them out.
You know, the vision truly is one hundred percent inclusion. Will we ever make it to that spot? I'm not certain. We do have students in the district who have such severe social, emotional issues that they're at boarding schools, not being educated here. So I'm not certain that we would ever be able to get to that point. But that is the goal. One of the ways that I see us getting there is by using something called, the acronym is UDL, Universal Design for Learning. Universal Design for Learning provides an opportunity for all students to have access, participate in, and progress in general education curriculum by reducing barriers to instruction. And there are three basic principles to it. One is representation, and it's looking at offering the information to students in more than one format. And then, and their action and expression. And it's giving kids more, more than one way to interact with the material and to show that they've learned it. And then engagement, it's encouraging teachers to look for multiple ways of, to motivate and engage the students. And in fact, we have a teacher here from Longley Way, where we had a board learning walk just a week and a half ago, and they were, and in her classroom, you could see five or seven different things going on simultaneously that allowed the students different ways to access the same math problems in multiple ways so that kids could learn in a variety of ways to really engage. And I think continuing our journey in UDL will really make a huge divi, huge, help us with huge progress to getting to that one hundred percent inclusion.
Again, thank you candidates. On behalf of my partner in questioning, Jeffrey Lee, I will go ahead and turn the mic over to our moderator, Mr. Kevin Fox.
Thank you again for being here. We'd like to thank our candidates and wish them the best of luck. Our moderators for their great questioning, we thank you. There were 37 questions submitted, so obviously we weren't able to get to those all. We've invited the candidates to stick around in the hallway at their tables. If you have additional time to engage with them, that'd be great. Remember, the election is March 3rd. Early voting begins on the 22nd. Thank you all, good night.